All right, we'll call the meeting to order on behalf of the Planning Commission. I'd like to welcome our residents and viewers to this regular meeting of September 10th, 2024. In addition to our planning staff with us tonight is our Economic Development Director and our City Attorney. On tonight's agenda, we have one public hearing and one discussion item. Before we get into the public hearing, we have one housekeeping item. That would be the minutes of our August 14th regular meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. With that, we're going to open the public hearing first. This is a two-part application. The first part is a preliminary plat and a preliminary PUD development for the Farmington Technology Park. The second part of the application is for the rezoning of two parcels of land, including the Fountain Valley Golf Course and the property formerly known as the Angus Property from highway business, residential, park, and open space, and agricultural to mixed-use, commercial, and residential. The applicant for both is Tract. I just wanted the residents to know that the commissioners did receive the petition dated August 7th, 2024, along with letters from several residents that would be included in the public record. Before we start up the city staff, our City Attorney has something to comment on AUARs.
Yes, thank you Chair and Commission. Hello all, my name is Leah Koch. I'm the City Attorney for the City of Farmington. Just briefly, there's been some confusion about AUAR in this process. Just wanted to let you all know that it's not uncommon for the AUAR process to run concurrently with some of these preliminary decisions. For those that don't know, AUAR is Alternative Urban Area-Wide Review, which is required by the Environmental Quality Board of the State of Minnesota. That is running separately from this process that's here today. We're not in a position to address each and every environmental concern today as a part of this step of the process, but we will have the results of the AUAR before final approvals are issued. So, thank you.
Thank you Leah. Tony, you're going to start out the hearing then?
I am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commission members. As Chiradi had mentioned, this is kind of a two-part public hearing, with the first being a preliminary plat, preliminary plan development for what is termed the Farmington Technology Park, and that is the developer Tract, and then rezoning of the Fountain Valley Golf Course and property formerly known as the Angus Property from B1, R1, R2, R3, Park and Open Space, and A1 to MUCI, which is our mixed-use, commercial, industrial. Do want to mention that, as the Commission is aware, you did review this rezon back several months ago and did table this item. Do want to mention that after that particular public hearing, the developer did listen to a lot of those concerns that were addressed at that time or brought up at that time, and since then, they have voluntarily applied for what's called the planned unit development along with the plat in order to try to address some of those concerns and have some of that information that wasn't readily available at that initial public hearing, available with the preliminary plat and PUD. So, as far as the surrounding land uses, the properties at the very southeast corner of town, there's agricultural uses to the north, low-density residential and agricultural uses to the east, those being Castle Rock Township, industrial and low-density residential to the west, and then agricultural uses to the south. Again, anything south would be in the township as well. The preliminary plat consists of three lots, and that's spread over just over 340 acres of land. There would be, again, three lots. Lot 1, Block 1, which is 155.20 acres. This is the northern portion of the data center campus, and it would be adjacent to Minnesota 50. Lot 2, Block 1 is 2.07 acres. That's in the very northwest corner of the plat. That lot would be deeded to the city for utility purposes, and then Lot 1, Block 2, which is the southern portion of the site, the school district site, or what's formerly known as the Angus Site, is 185.54 acres. And again, that would be the southern portion of the data center campus. Do want to mention that they are showing a 75-foot wide drainage and utility roadway and trail easement specifically along the eastern boundary of what is Lot 1, Block 1. And this is to preserve future corridor for Biscayne Avenue, which would be a county road, future county road. At this time, it would not be constructed as part of this development. It would be constructed if and when the county decides to move forward with that project. The representative site plan, included in your packet is a site plan, and I call it a representative site plan in that it gives an idea of how the site could be ultimately developed. This site plan is subject to change as the end user has not yet been secured or identified for the campus. Do want to mention that individual site plans will have to be approved by this commission prior to any data center building or ancillary use being constructed on-site. Design standards are being proposed as part of the planned unit development. All site plans would have to be in compliance with those standards if and when approved. What is shown here is the campus as a whole. The one on the left shows the north campus, and the one on the right is the south campus. The gray areas are essentially the proposed buildings, so, for reference. The plan does provide for up to 12 data center buildings. That would be six on either campus, along with two administrative buildings, again, one on each campus between the north and south campuses. The square footage of the data centers on the north campus site is 1.6 million square feet. With the southern campus, that would be just over 900,000 square feet. Building setbacks will be substantially greater than generally allowed under our mixed-use commercial industrial district. Just for reference, the MUCI, the setbacks that are allowed under that specific zoning district, the front yard is a zero setback, side yard zero, and rear yard 20. What is being proposed as far as the design standards for this would be a minimum of 250 feet from properties adjacent to residential uses, and that would be from the property line, and 150 feet from any property line adjacent to a non-residential use. The applicant is proposing a 40-foot wide natural buffer in addition to those expanded setbacks. This would be around the majority of the perimeter of the site, and the intent of this buffer is to retain as many of the existing healthy trees that are on-site as practical. There will be additional berming, potentially 10 feet and/or higher, will also be placed within the natural buffer area to provide additional screening and some visual aesthetics as well. Do want to note that perimeter fencing up to 14 feet in height will also be provided. This will be located outside of the natural buffer area, so it will be further than 40 feet from the property line, just so the Commission is aware. The other thing to note with the 14 feet in height, that type of fencing does require a building permit, so... What we have here is basically the buildable, this site, or this plan here shows basically what they are proposing for the buildable portion of the properties. Everything in brown meets those setbacks. This does show the buffer area along with where the floodplain is located on the Lot 1, Block 2 on the south. There's about 69 acres of that site that is encumbered with floodplain, so... As far as transportation and parking, there are four anticipated accesses for this campus. The northern campus includes one off of Highway 50 or 220th Street, and one off at 225th Street on the southern end of the northern campus. The southern campus includes an access of a 225th Street, and then the second one would be off of Biscayne Avenue. The proposed development standards would require one parking space for each 1,000 square foot of office space. The way the development standards are written now, or proposed parking spaces, would not be required for the designated data hall areas or the data centers themselves, so... Parks, trails, and sidewalks. With this particular plat, the city would be looking to take cash in lieu versus land dedication. A future trail will be constructed in that 75-foot wide drainage and utility roadway and trail easement, and again, that would be constructed if and when the county decides to move for that project forward. As I had mentioned, Tract is proposing to develop this project as a planned unit development and have suggested certain development standards be established and include language on the following. Setbacks, again, provide standards for the minimum setback of buildings from property lines. As I had previously mentioned, this includes a minimum setback of 250 feet from any property line adjacent to residential uses, 150-foot setback from any property line not adjacent to residential uses, and then a 40-foot setback from the right-of-way of 225th Street. Number two is the natural buffers. Again, provides for that 40-foot wide natural buffer along the majority of the perimeter of the site. Landscaping provides for types of planting that will be used throughout the site, allows for the use of rock gravel mulch as an accent material for maintenance areas adjacent to buildings or around utility access points, and provides standards for landscaping of parking lots as well. Easement for future county road, basically just provides some language similar to what I already referred to as far as how that easement would be utilized. General design standards, this includes things for facade standards and screening require, excuse me, screening requirements, provides language that provides protection from undifferentiated surfaces on principal building facades by requiring the use of at least two design elements, changes in, such as changes in building height, building setbacks, that would be projections or recesses, fenestration, changes in building material, the pattern, texture, color, use of accent materials, overhangs, use of canopies or porticoes, arcades, and variations in the roofline. This also provides language regarding the screening of both ground-level utilities such as the substations and above-ground mounted mechanical equipment and structures. Building height, maximum building height on the site for a principal structure that is being requested is 80 feet. However, the maximum height at the building setback line will be, is proposed at 50 feet. The provision allows for a setback approach to building height. For each one foot of increase in building height, the building must be stepped back additional two feet. Maximum building height of accessory structure is 50 feet. Number seven is the fence height. Again, talks about going up to a maximum height of 14 feet. Electric utility lines, provides language on the need for electric utility lines, and their construction as part of the overall project. Number nine is noise. This provision provides language that all noise generated from the site shall meet the requirements as established by the MPCA. It provides language that a noise study will be prepared at time of site plan that demonstrates that the applicable noise levels will not exceed the base, will not be exceeded based on the specific system and equipment that will be used on-site. It does provide language requiring the installation of physical sound attenuation measures on any mechanical equipment that is installed at a data center building and located within 1,200 feet of any adjacent residential use under certain circumstances. Again, number 10, the parking is just outlining the one parking space for each 1,000 square feet of office use. 11 substations are exempt from them. MUCI basically states that the substations will be exempt from the design regulations of the MUCI zoning district, but that these facilities must be fenced and screened and would be reviewed as part of any overall site plan as well. Private communication towers provides language that these are permitted up to a maximum height of 80 feet. And lastly, number 13, the maximum lot coverage provides language that there is no maximum lot coverage for all uses built in the designated developable area. And again, that's that brown area that was in that map that I previously showed you. Okay, now, the second part of the request is regarding the rezoning of those specific parcels. The first one is the Angus Property that is owned by the school district. It is PID 070050076011 and 070050076012. These parcels were annexed into the city on April 24th of this year, at which time the parcels were automatically zoned to our A1 or agricultural zone, and that is per code. The request is to rezon these parcels from A1 to the MUCI, mixed-use, commercial, industrial. And then the second one is the rezon of the Fountain Valley Golf Course, the property located at 2830 220th Street West. Again, this is a mixture of zoning districts, including the B1, R1, R2, R3, Park and Open Space, and the request is to rezon that to the mixed-use, commercial, industrial, or MUCI as well. I do want to note that data centers are a permitted use in the MUCI zoning district as well. Do want to mention the comprehensive plan update. As the Commission is aware, the city began this process well over a year ago, well before this application even was a thought. It is a citywide mid-cycle update that aims to address, among other things, areas that have been brought into the city via annexation, such as the school district property, as well as the OAA, the orderly annexation areas that were part of the Empire Ordnance Annexation Agreement. Those were brought into the city when Empire Incorporated as a city a little over a year ago. The rezonings, the preliminary plat and preliminary plan unit development will need to be contingent upon approval of the comprehensive plan amendment being approved by the City Council and ultimately the Metropolitan Council. It is anticipated that the comprehensive plan amendment will be approved by the City Council by the end of this year, so... Therefore, the action that is requested this evening recommend approval of the following applications and petitions and forward the recommendation onto the City Council contingent upon approval of the mid-cycle comprehensive plan amendment. Number one, the preliminary plat and preliminary plan development for the Farmington Technology Park. Two, rezon the properties identified with PIDs 070050076011 and 070050076012 from A1 Agriculture to MUCI Mixed-Use Commercial Industrial. And three, rezon the property address at 2830 220th Street West from B1, R1, R2, R3, Park and Open Space to MUCI Mixed-Use Commercial Industrial.
All right, thank you, Tony. Is there anything else from staff, either Deanna or Leah? Nothing? All right. I did want to mention, because it was asked of me by one of the residents, if you are interested in speaking, you can speak to either one of the two parts of the application or you can speak to both. Again, I ask you to be respectful, limit your time. We have a number of people here. Again, if we start dragging on too long for each person, then we're going to have to start limiting it. And while others are speaking, please be respectful, you know, with your phones, with anything else, and just be a good neighbor, too. With that, then, I remind you, when you want to speak, you're going to have to come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record. We'll go from there. Just raise your hand. Before we do that, I guess I'm going to ask Mr. Steen, does the applicant have anything to add to the staff report?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Steen with Larkin Hoffman, and we represent Tract, the applicant. First, I want to say thank you to staff for that presentation. This is not an uncomplicated project. This is not a small project, and we appreciate all of their due diligence and hard work in this, and I think the Planning Commission should be proud of your staff. Per the staff recommendation, or per the staff report and the presentation, we are seeking rezonings, the preliminary plat, and the planned unit development. You had previously seen this project as part of a rezoning application, and that, at that time, Tract was seeking straight rezoning, so development of a data center under the MUCI district. As staff indicated, data center is a permitted use as of right, but we heard this body, we heard your comments, we heard the community, and we heard staff, and we went back to look at our options, and we voluntarily opted into the planned unit development procedure. And we did this for a couple of reasons. You know, it provides some protections for the city, provides the city some additional oversight, and it also provides us some flexibility and assurances as to how the future development gets phased. Specifically, we're talking about the flexibility that Mr. Whipler went through, and that guarantees related to screening, setback, noise mitigation, and other development standards that would be built into the development contract with the developer. So our request tonight is not to review and recommend approval of the final development. What we're asking for is for the rezoning, the preliminary plat, and the PUD framework. And that framework is going to set forth the process and the standards by which the actual development will be reviewed, because this project will ultimately occur in at least two phases. The standards, as Tony laid out, address a number of built-form standards. They're both performance and development standards that address building height, setbacks, screening, landscaping, and we have the ability, again, under this PUD, to make sure that we guarantee that those exceed the underlying MUCI district. And the process itself will define, again, a process in which you, as the Planning Commission, have additional oversight through every step of this project. Every phase, as is contemplated under this planned unit development, will include site plan review by the Planning Commission. It will include noise mitigation, a noise study that will be reviewed by the Planning Commission, if you want, a visual effects study, a traffic study, and it will outline this all in a contractual process. And then, most important, each one of those phases will be bound between the developer and the city through a development contract that will make sure we all understand those standards. So I'm not going to go through all of the individual standards. We're happy to answer any questions. We have the entire Tract team here, including our engineers, and we're happy to address those, or we can wait until the end of the public comment, and we can address those all at the same time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Steen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
You and your staff are still available. I'd appreciate that also. All right, we come to the citizens portion. You want to start, sir?
Oh. My mom always told me that I should take my head off when I talk to betters. That's yet to be determined tonight.
All right, thank you. Can I get your name and address, please?
Robert Jones, I live on 12th Street. I have previously been on the Northwest Regional Planning Commission in Wisconsin. That's my correctly named by. I'm here because my girlfriend has decided that she would be my fiancee. She's a Vikings fan, so, you know, I can't go back to Green Bay.
You're stuck, man.
I'm sorry. For you guys, this is about tax revenue. You know, no bones about it. The city's been bankrupt, they've had some trouble, right? Unless you guys want to take a pay cut, you need to have the tax revenue. I support this project 100% with some concerns. The history, I know nothing about the history of Tract. Do you know something about the history of Tract? Have they done this kind of thing somewhere else in the country or in the state? And, and do we have a history of them? Are they there for one year, two years, three years, 10 years, right? Or, once the paycheck is paid and everything is either dotted and teased or crossed, right? Are they going to do that somewhere else, turn it over to somebody else who may or may not be bound by all of these promises that they have made to you and the things that you expect to happen? The future county road and the trail, right? Can you depend on a county to do that within the next 50 years? I don't know much about Dakota County, but counties I've been, right? They only do things when they see a benefit to them. And in their, in that case, the benefit is tax revenue. Everybody wants tax revenue. In addition, Tract, right? They're not doing this for free. They see a profit in this. There's a profit motivation. There's a profit motivation for everybody, for Tract, for the gas station, for the liquor stores in town, right? For the city, right? It's all about the Benjamins when it comes down to this. And I found that out sitting on the Regional Planning Commission. We've had lots of people come in there and schnookered us or tried to schnooker us into, you know, they paint a nice, warm and fuzzy thing, and when it comes right down to it, it just doesn't wash. I want to know Tract's history. Are they going to be here in 10 years? They, a number of things. They're talking about 250-foot setback from residential plus a 40-foot extra and a 10-foot berm. If they believe that a 40-foot additional and a 10-foot berm is required, then let's put it in the contract. Let's not leave that up to them. If they think that sound issues are going to have, right? Let's look at what they're talking about. Let's look at, let's look at 40 or 60 Hz motors for fans and pumps and that kind of stuff for the cooling system, right? Let's look at going up to 90 Hz at some times. Let's look at their water usage. Is there going to be an issue with their evaporative system? Are they going to be drawing more? And we ran into this in one incident, they're going to be drawing more from the city water system than they believe today. They might really believe it today, but down the line, are they going to be drawing more? Now, public service with their electricity, you know, they can string another wire, right? But when it comes to pumping water out of the ground, we're talking about a groundwater, we're talking about the stuff that we drink. And, you know, that becomes an issue. What about monitoring and enforcement? Do you, as a planning commission, have the authority, right, right now? And can you develop that authority to enforce all of these things if indeed Tract moves on and somebody else comes in? It's my understanding that this is going to be a whole bunch of small businesses that are taking up these space. I love it. I'm an IT guy from way back, you know? I walked around in the basement of the Comp Sci building at 3:00 in the morning waiting for my printer to print, okay? I love it. I support this. I support the tax revenue. I support the gas stations and the liquor stores, especially the liquor stores. You know, this is good for the town, but it has to be done right, and it has to be done so that... And it has to be done so that 10 years down the road, we're not suffering from it, right? What kind of bonding can we put on Tract or on somebody? So that things can be made right if it goes awry? Parking lots. If they're gonna put up 40-foot towers with cleat lights on that are gonna shine into my bedroom, I'm not gonna be happy with that. Has that been addressed? I know. Lighting in parking lots for safety is fine for, you know, the ladies that are gonna be working there. And of course, some of us guys, too, you know. Are they gonna maintain the landscaping? Who's gonna maintain the landscaping if they move on? Are there gonna be bonds to do that? They're talking about changing the roofline. I don't care what the building looks like. What I care about is, down the road, are they going to, is the design of the building gonna affect my lifestyle? The lifestyle of all these people here? And because we don't want that. Yes, we want development, we want this and we want that. You know, I love it that I got high-speed internet most of the time. My carrier's not all that good. You know, but I also want to sit on my deck and we're north of the 45th parallel, and tonight would be a good night, and look at the northern lights without interruption. And that's, you know, it's quality of life that concerns me. Yes, yes, we can do this. It's possible to do that. But it's your job to make sure, right? That my quality of life meshes with the thing. They talk about taking up green space and parks for this development. Is there a plan for any mediation? Are they gonna go over here and dig a swamp, you know, for the loons and the ducks or whatever, right? To replace the parks and the green space that they use? Are you gonna require them to do that? You guys write the contract. Well, no, where's that guy, the lawyer, him? He writes the contract, okay? We need to make sure that that's in there.
Mr. Jones, if you can start wrapping it up, please.
Okay, yeah. Bottom line is, you know, the squirrels and the turtles really don't care what the building looks like? I do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gotta have an L.
There you go.
And the fact that you laughed means that I took my hat off appropriately.
I enjoyed listening to you. Mr. Steen, did you wanna respond to any of his questions or do you wanna wait it to the end? I took it as mostly as, what is the guarantee you're gonna be here and do a completion and stand by these minimum development standards?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Chair, Commissioners. You know, probably for efficiency's sake, I can certainly save a list of comments and address those at the end. But in terms of addressing this gentleman's comments specifically, you know, we are absolutely in agreement. The intent is that there will be a contract that holds any future end user, any of our customers, to the standards that are in this PUD. So that is 100% the intent. That is why we will have both a development contract at this phase as well as at every subsequent phase of development.
Okay, thank you. And you can wait till the end. We'll get you at the end now.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions, please?
Please walk up to the podium.
Yes, please. State your name and address, please.
Sure.
Good evening, Committee. My name's David Puchal. I live on 224th Street South, just west of this rezon area. I did 14 years active duty Air Force, seven combat deployments. I returned back to Minnesota. I'm a St. Cloud native, born and raised up there. I guess maybe rhetorical to the committee, but maybe get an answer from Tract. But we mentioned the 2040 comprehensive planning process, which is also going for mid-phase review, projects 10,000 households by 2030, 11,800 by 2040. There was an updated comprehensive housing needs analysis for Dakota County, Minnesota, which was conducted by Maxfield Research and Consulting, LLC. They came to the same conclusion expecting 16% to 15% growth per decade, so 20 to 30, 16% growth and 15% growth in Farmington as far as residential space. So ultimately, my, well, the first thing is, this action's requested here to rezone. I would highly recommend the committee disapprove the rezoning of these properties for those reasons previously mentioned. Furthermore, the guiding principles in the 2040 plan for Farmington talked about providing a variety of well-maintained housing choices, which accommodate a variety of housing choices and styles for residents, promote the upkeep and enhancement of existing housing stock, create neighborhoods that are connected, and provide a sense of community. Further down in that same document in the appendix, Land Use Goal Number Three, Farmington's existing hometown character is maintained and strengthened throughout its future growth. That point is further expanded. It says, "Create land use patterns that create connections between residential neighborhoods and the city's park, downtown, and other amenities." I've recommended the council or the committee to deny this rezoning request for those reasons because I do not understand why we would replace R1, R2, R3 that's already there that is flanked on both sides, west and east, residential areas, particularly the west that's pretty much fully built up in the executive estates. Why are we trading that residential area for mixed use when our own guide, already published, says that we should create communities and meet this housing demand? I moved here last year. I can tell you that, and just driving to the airport and back for work, there's a demand for residential areas, and it's forecasted to continue to be there. Why don't we use those residential zoned areas to meet that demand that is there now and is forecasted to still be there in the next two decades? It would be really nice to keep this area the way it currently is. And having looked at some of the zoning areas on the publicly available websites, there's other PID's I think would maybe have better use that are already in industrial areas or residential areas that could be rezoned because they are not flanked by already established neighborhoods. Again, my name's David. I'm back from active duty service, trying to live in a little bit smaller town. Maybe we should keep the farm in Farmington. Thank you.
Thank you. May I ask me?
Good evening. My name is Denise May. I live at 22265 Bering Avenue in Farmington. What I'm gonna read this evening is an email I did send to the Planning Commission and to the council today, but I felt compelled to read it to you and to the audience. Mayor Council Members, Planning Commission. Please do not rezone the Fountain Valley Golf Course property, which is zoned residential, commercial, to mixed-use, commercial, industrial, to make way for Technology Park. My husband, Dan, and I live at 22265 Bering Avenue. We are next to the golf course. We share a property line. Our house is only about 150 feet from the property line. A Technology Park data center on that property would drastically change the quality of life for hundreds of people who would live nearby. You received signed petitions, which includes almost 300 signatures of Farmington residents who oppose the rezoning. We are not objecting to a Technology Park in Farmington. We object to the proposed location. We object to the rezoning. We have many concerns and fears. You have heard and will hear the concerns from many Farmington residents about many issues in regards to data centers. Dan and I are also very concerned about all of those issues. Right now, I'm gonna focus on the noise. We are extremely concerned and fearful of the noise that would be generated by a 12-building Technology Park. Kristen Dean of Tract said in her presentation to the Farmington council and the Planning Commission that an ambient noise study was being done for the properties surrounding the proposed data center site to measure what levels are at the property lines. Her presentation contained a slide that said, and I quote, "Noise from data centers cannot create noise that exceeds the DBA on adjacent resident property," residential property. We have been, end of quote, "We have been in contact with Kristen Dean and asked her specifically which noise levels would not be exceeded." We asked her specifically what is the ambient noise level that was measured at the property lines. She responded this way in an email to us, and I quote, "Tract engaged with a noise consultant to ensure that the data center campus can be designed to meet the applicable noise standards and specifically to ensure that the noise generated from the proposed project would meet the noise levels at the adjacent residential property lines." What noise standards is she referring to? Is it the legal maximum limit of daytime 60, 65 decibels? Nighttime 50, 55 decibels at the property lines? A 70-decibel level is equivalent to standing 10 feet away from a running vacuum cleaner while indoors. But those legal levels are far above what we currently experience in our neighborhood. We purchased a sound level meter and tested the sound level at several different times outside on our deck. When the AC is running, the level is 51 decibels. Without AC, it's 38. Currently, in the evening, we have crickets. That level is 43. The noise from the data center would be constant, 24/7. Could be up to 65 decibels daytime, 55 at night. And then there is the backup generator testing, which would happen on a regular basis. Our air conditioner goes on and off. In the winter, with no crickets, the level would be around 38 decibels day and night, which is really quiet. We have screenshots to prove our measurements. We have very little traffic on our streets, and noise from the neighborhood is the occasional lawnmower, snow throwers, kids laughing. The usual noise from the golf course is occasional lawn mowing or someone excitingly yelling because of a great shot or sometimes a four. A promise of no more than 60, 65, 50, 55 decibels when our actual levels are so much lower is obviously an issue and worry for us. Definitely would affect our quality of life. What about tonal noise? That's the low-frequency noise, a hum, the kind you may or not hear. But studies show it can cause health issues and sleep issues. At the August 20th community meeting held by Tract, tonal noise was included on a slide on the presentation, but it was not talked about. In an email to Kristen Dean, I asked for facts and her thoughts on tonal noise, and she has not responded in regards to tonal noise. I have seen and read recent news stories from other parts of the country where people living near data centers are very bothered by the noises coming from data centers which are disrupting their lives. This is happening in Arizona, Illinois, Virginia, just to name a few. Those city councils are dealing with very unhappy, miserable residents trying to figure out a way to resolve the noise issues or at least reduce the noise with no acceptable resolutions for those residents. It is harder, if not impossible, to deal with end users after data centers have been built and operating. Applications for rezoning for data centers have been denied because of concern for nearby residents. Tract's presentation to the council, Planning Commission, and the residents on June 4th of this year stated that data centers are good neighbors and that includes proper planning. Tract said, and I quote, "When cities master plan growth, data centers along with critical infrastructure like airports are best located away from residential centers," end of quote. So they admit that a data center being located near residential area is not good. So why are they requesting to build one right next to residential areas? In an email conversation I had with Mayor Hoyt, he stated that the city has a legal requirement to issue a finding of fact when denying an application. I quote, "Not liking it, feeling uncomfortable with it, or any other arbitrary reasoning is not sufficient if the applicant pursues litigation." How about the finding of fact that this rezoning looks and smells like spot zoning? How can you look at Tract's preliminary PUD plans, focus on the hundreds of homes surrounding the property, and think this would be a good idea for the residents? There would be an extreme departure in land use between residential zoning and industrial zoning. Another consideration. The Minnesota League of Cities and its zoning guide for cities says neighborhood opposition can be considered as a finding of fact when denying a zoning application. The guide says, and I quote, "While broad, general statements of opposition may not qualify as a reasonable finding of fact, specific statements made by the public that are concrete and factual in nature and relate to the public welfare do rise to the level of acceptable findings." According to the mayor, Farmington is 45% undeveloped. There are other industrial or farmland areas in Farmington that make sense for a data center. Have landowners been made aware that Tract or other developers are seeking land for development? Tract says they want the golf course and school district property because it is close to the power line. They don't care that residents are close. This is all about money. We would be naive to think otherwise. I'm sure it would save Tract millions of dollars not to have to bring in their own power line. The city of Farmington can collect just as much tax revenue from another technology center at a different location. Tract needs to look for suitable land that makes sense for everyone. It does not make sense for those residents living near the school district property or the golf course property, the same property you annexed and rezoned 17 years ago in 2007 for residential, commercial use. Dan and I moved to Farmington on August 19, 1986. That's 38 years ago. And our home was one of the last ones built in our development. The first one was 45 years ago. Our property abuts up to the golf course. We overlook the golf course. The golf course feels like a continuation of our backyard. We intentionally did not plant any trees or shrubs in our backyard so we could have full view of the golf course. We moved here because of the golf course, and we still enjoy our view. But we also love the community. We don't want to live anywhere else. We are indeed lucky to have great neighbors, all of us residents of the Farmington community. We have paid 38 years of taxes, of property taxes. We have supported local businesses whenever we could, including getting help with home improvements, house maintenance, purchase of gasoline, medical services, banking services, furniture purchases, food, convenience stores, bakery, vet services, hardware store, liquor store, haircuts, golf, and more. We have participated in fundraisers. Dan works in Farmington, and I did too before I retired. We've been very loyal to Farmington for many years, and that's gotta mean something. We know someday the golf course will no longer be a golf course. We hope whatever it turns into, much thought and respect for all of us who have called Farmington home for decades, will have gone into the planning and decision-making of the future of Farmington. Our quality of life is in your hands. Please say no to rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sten.
My name is Jeff Schotler. I live at 22420 Calico Court, Farmington, Minnesota. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you, everybody, for coming and showing some support. I don't need to go on and on about the negative impacts from the noise and the size of this type of project and the obvious environmental impact as I know you have heard from many of us privately over the last couple of weeks. You must already know this is not a good fit for a residential neighborhood. This very issue is being protested and picketed in many US cities right now over sound and negatively impacting surrounding residential areas. This is what's happening in other places at what they're proposing at the distances. You've seen what they've proposed. If you look up the other protests and the pickets and the lawsuits that are going on, it's what they've proposed. This can't be permitted. This property was never intended or designed to be an industrial park until the specific land transaction started. This attempt at rezoning is a very definition of spot zoning. This does not follow or remotely resemble the current comprehensive land use plan that was presented to every person in this room. You have seen the renderings of what they want to do with the supposed industrial park. You absolutely must know there is no way this belongs between two neighborhoods. The only advantage of this project is money. We cannot toss away a well-designed and expensive comp plan and negatively impact residents every time a project pops up that provides tax money. every time a project pops up that provides tax money. It's an embarrassing move for Farmington to attempt this rezoning or to even to allow it, and it must be denied. We're here tonight as a group to ask you to protect our current quality of life and our investment by denying the application. Farmington needs to value and respect its residents more than tax money and deny the project. The comp plan gives plenty of diversity to these specific parcels and needs some modifications. These owners want to sell the property, put them for sale. They haven't been for sale in over a decade. There's every type of residential heir plus them-like commercial. This is a sellable property. We're not doing anybody a favor by rezoning this so the Olsons can retire. They haven't attempted to sell this. It hasn't been for sale. This reiterates part of the spot zoning. It wasn't for sale. I mean, this is a big part of all of that. To place an industrial park between two neighborhoods and allow deviations that exceed even MUCI zoning is ridiculous. Between neighborhoods to allow and exceed MUCI zoning, you're putting fifty-foot-tall buildings under three hundred feet from homes. That's crazy. This is what the lawsuits around the rest of the country are about right now. They're in that two-to-four-hundred-foot range. You have to look into some of that. I'm sure you guys have. I know you have. You've heard from every one of us. I think you've been given examples of all of it. I'm not telling you anything new. I'm telling you my opinion that needs to be denied. I hope you acknowledge the residents' voices tonight denying this application based on the fact it doesn't follow the current comp plan land use, doesn't reflect the current surrounding areas. It'll ultimately result in direct negative impact and a lower quality of life for all that live by it. There's no doubt in that. It will impact every person's house within a block of that place, if not more. And the ones that are just past the sound and the feel and the effect of it, they will be negatively impacted by losing their friends and their neighbors. This isn't where it belongs. You have other room. You have opportunity. You've had two opportunities this year. There'll be ten more next year. If they want to come in and present something to you, be so respectful about it. Make it so we don't see it, so we don't hear it. Put a guarantee. Don't say "up to" a sixteen-foot burn, because "up to" means zero feet to sixteen feet. Don't assume we're gonna use water cooling. Guarantee it, because the second they find out that the DNR or whoever says there's enough water, we're going to air cooling. You can't mitigate that sound. You can't run that sound down with buffers and trees and hills. The air cooling is a whole different animal if you've gone out and studied and researched these things. Meta has now switched from almost all water cooling to half air cooling. That's in Rosemont. Why did they switch? Because they don't have enough water. Now Bengal's gonna be farther along. What are they gonna do when they're told there's not enough water? And it's not them. It's twelve end-users. All of this has to be denied. If they want to come back to the table and give some guarantees and put a bond soon as you start violating these noise ordinances, so you're gonna be running at these sixty, sixty-five decibels? Call Interstate Power Supply out of Lakeville. They're supplying the Kohler generators that they specked out and put pictures of on their plans. Those generators run individually at a hundred decibels, and they'll be getting them from Interstate who supplies this whole region with Kohler generators. They can't even, the second they start one, keep up the city code. I don't understand how it's allowable between residences. That's all I got. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Schotler. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Johnson, and thank you to the Planning Commission for listening to our concerns. My concerns are called promises, promises, promises. On May thirty-first, Kristin Dean, Director of Entitlements for Tract Land Management, promised they would be good neighbors as the process to rezone the Fountain Valley Golf Course and the former Angus Farm to the south moved forward. This rezoning would allow a data center or technology park to be built on these properties. And in my article to the Farmington Independent, which was published on August twenty-third, I believe all the council members got a copy of it, I mentioned how she said that the first tenant of being a good neighbor is not building in a residential area. Tract and the city of Farmington have ignored that rule from day one. Now several other issues have been addressed in a public meeting put on by Tract on August twentieth, and I don't know how Tract can promise that a data center will be a good neighbor when the company, which is less than two years old, has not completed a project yet. How do they know? Promises, promises. Noise was addressed during the presentation with Dean stating that the decibel statute would be the rule. Sixty to sixty-five daytime maximum. I don't believe she mentioned the fifty, fifty-five for the evening, but that's the rule. For comparison, seventy decibels is about the level of a vacuum cleaner. Decibel reading would be measured at the residential property line, and commercial levels are higher but cannot cross over into residential areas. There are several issues here. As I stated in my eight-twenty-three, my August twenty-third article, decibel ratings are not the cause of complaints in residential neighbors surrounding existing data centers in other cities. The tonal hum is the culprit and is not really a big contributor to the decibel ratings. Yet it appears that Tract is not acknowledging that issue despite the fact that it is a very common cause of complaints, generally not addressed. I have research to back that. One article that I read even says it's called "the classic data center hum," because they all have it. The consistent hum contributes very little to the decibel ratings, and these companies are not because the data centers are outdated. Oftentimes, even newer, all data centers have it, and just the fact that it's an older data center is not an excuse. A second sound issue that comes from Dean's statement from an August twenty presentation, in her statements about mitigation and soundproofing of buildings, she referred to the sixty, sixty-five daytime rating. So that means noise cannot exceed sixty decibels for more than fifty percent of an hour or thirty minutes, and not exceed sixty decibels for ten percent or six minutes out of every hour. But she did not mention the nighttime at fifty-five, and she didn't mention noise generated by large trucks, which are frequent visitors to data centers as they deliver servers and equipment. The noise from delivery trucks actually became part of the ordinance that Manassas, Virginia had to adopt because deliveries were happening at all hours of day and night. And she did not address what's called the doubling effect. I turned to the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency to get the straight story on noise law in Minnesota and how it's enforced. I used a guide to noise control in Minnesota, which is the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency's sort of bible of noise statute and control, and I have discerned some challenges to Dean's claims. The MPCA does have the power to enforce these statutes. When sound is being admitted or emitted from several sources, the noise increases by three decibels as the sources of the sound are doubled. In other words, if a generator produces seventy decibels, two generators produce seventy-three, and four generators produce seventy-six. Twelve sources produce eighty-point-five. Remember that the number of buildings which are in the hypothetical design presented by Tract is twelve, twelve buildings. Also, when Dean applied that the sound will be something not quite as loud as a vacuum cleaner or seventy decibels at the property line, she's admitted certain other pertinent facts. The noise cannot exceed fifty at night. Now remember, it's a consistent sound, no more than six minutes out of every sixty, but it's a consistent sound. Since data centers do produce consistent ambient noise from fans, generators, other heat transferring equipment, the prediction of sixty-five decibels at the property line is not only grossly underestimated, it's illegal. Promises, promises.
Ms. Johnson, how much longer are you gonna plan to go?
I'll be in just a couple of minutes. According to Minnesota Statute 116, powers and duties consideration shall be given to such factors as intensity, the type of noise. Part of it is it cannot interfere unreasonably with the enjoyment of life or property. One of the noise statutes that I think is very important, seven-oh-three-oh, point-oh-oh-three-oh, is noise control requirement. Any municipality having the authority to regulate land use shall take all reasonable measures within its jurisdiction to prevent the establishment of land use. Activities in the noise area where standards established will be violated immediately upon establishment of the land use. In other words, the minute it opens, it's breaking the law. And the standards go on to talk again about what Denise said, speech, sleep, annoyances, hearing conversations, and so forth. I know that you have acknowledged that the MPCA requires a pre-construction review. It will be part of this, but I also think it's important to know that we have spoken or I have contacted Lauren Dickerson, who's with the noise, and I'll make sure that she knows, again, the feelings that we have in this community. Responsible for not allowing, the community is responsible for not allowing land uses that would immediately violate the standards. I want you to think about something. I was a classroom teacher in middle school for forty years, and in middle school, you know there would be disruptions. Always you hear the, "Oh, it was those guys over there," or "It wasn't me." Now we have Tract coming in, and they won't be here after it's all up and running because they are the developers and they'll sell it out to end-users. All those end-users will be saying is, "Oh, it's not me making that sound. It's that company over there," or "They're the ones overusing the water." That's a common game. There's no way to enforce the A U A R with all these multiple users coming in after the fact. Noise will be an issue here, just as it was in Manassas, Virginia. And the fact, I can cite Steven Gonzalez's research, that it's not out-of-date data centers. Northern Virginia is now starting to deny rezoning of data centers because of noise, and that city has far more experience, all of Northern Virginia does, as compared to Farmington, in realizing factors like noise. How many reasons does the city need to deny this? What motivation does the city have to help to mitigate this when they're the ones pushing for it in the first place with a tax dollar? How many reasons? Maybe I could talk about the Bengal project. That's appropriate place, appropriately placed. It's up on that corridor on Highway fifty west of the gas company and so forth. Even though that's in its head, I guess, of this one in terms of the approval process, but even the DNR is skeptical of things like the water usage there. I could also talk about the promise of high-paying jobs. Here's a quote from Forbes Magazine on August thirteenth, twenty-twenty-four. "Data centers not only fail to create jobs and significant numbers, they're huge drains on local infrastructures, and they use a lot of tremendous water to operate." Microsoft has a project going in Scotland right now to put data centers on the floor of the ocean, and they only have to lift that data center for inspection. The goal is, it's not quite there, but the goal is every five years, they have to have a physical inspection of the data center. These technology jobs are remote. They're not onsite. Farmington will have maintenance jobs. There will probably be some technician jobs, but this large promise of jobs, especially high-paying tech jobs, is, again, promises, promises. Deanna Keonan asked to have a neutral third party or promised to have a neutral third party educate the city council about data centers, and she called on AFCON. Well, we did some research on AFCON. It was supposed to educate the city officials about data centers. AFCON's membership is fee-based. It's an organization that provides education and networking for end-users, consultants, and vendors, all of whom have to pay to be a member, and that's about as far from a neutral third party as you can get. That's a lobbyist.
Ms. Johnson, can I ask you, how much longer are you gonna be?
I will read my conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
False promises are part of the reason that our city has hired, with more than three hundred petitions, has hired an attorney and are objecting to the rezoning. It is not incumbent for the residents of southeastern Farmington and countryside estates in Castle Rock to sacrifice our lifestyle and well-being, let alone our home equity, to allegedly provide the tax base for the city. It is incumbent upon the city of Farmington to obey the law and not allow for rezoning for a land use that's in violation of noise statues immediately upon completion. The proposal is incompatible with existing zoning and is illegal spot zoning. I ask that you vote no to rezoning.
Thank you. You know, I mentioned, can I just ask, I mentioned earlier that everybody that wants to speak will get a chance. Can I see by a show of hands how many people want to speak tonight? Okay, so we still got quite a few. So we're gonna set a time limit now, because some of them are going ten, twelve minutes. So what do you recommend, five minutes?
I'm comfortable with that. I think you've been doing a good job managing expectations with each speaker.
Okay. If they start getting long, that one there went almost thirteen minutes. So I get concerned if everybody that wants to speak goes that long that we're not gonna get home tonight. So go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine. I will be fairly brief. And the comments that I prepared were geared more to have us look back towards the beginning of the project.
Could you name an address, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Sarah Frye. I live in Executive Estates on Karina Court. When we were informed about a year ago that the school district was going to sell land, and I won't get into too much math, I know we don't want to sit here and listen to math, but the basics told us that the profit of the sale would be, I mean, in accordance with public school funding and accounting, the profits of the sale would be to use on maintenance and equipment for the school. And we know there's a lot of sales tax gifts from the state, but there would be property taxes received, although we need to keep in mind that the property taxes received are limited based on Dakota County split and the fact of the annex, which reduces the amount of Farmington actually receiving of the property taxes. So I think it's important to keep in mind that ninety percent of the property taxes the first year actually is Farmington handing that to Castle Rock. But the sale was planned, as we were told, in an effort to benefit Farmington's children. So since the sale of the land was announced, we know who the buyer is potentially for the land. We also know that there's Project Bengal that's happening right now, and it's a short distance from Farmington High School, about one to two miles perhaps. And based on other presentations, we know scientific data, in previous presentations, that low-frequency noise can easily travel several miles. After what we've learned about health effects of exposure to long-term noise and low-frequency, mood swings, anxiety, raised stress hormones that lead to heart disease, and CDC warnings against pregnant women working in a place with constant motors running, why would we assume that children aren't going to suffer from illnesses related to data campuses in their environment? And children who live near the technology campus, who would also attend Farmington High School, would only be free of that low noise, that tonal hum, on days when they would be able to leave South Farmington. And District 192 has stated that it wants to be a destination district. Life near data centers has been troubled with bad reputations for years, with many, many other publications prior to this meeting. Placing a data campus in the middle of a residential neighborhood won't attract people to Farmington. It will most certainly chase them away. There are probably families who are already thinking of leaving, and maybe our mayor doesn't care if they leave, but it's my impression that our school board wants Farmington to be a welcoming place. And those children that we're supposed to see a benefit, how will their learning improve while they're suffering from increased anxiety, fatigue, and a constant sense of impending dread and threat that you get from being around the tonal noise? I'm asking the Planning Commission and the city council to remember the original purpose of the land sale and to actually help Farmington's children. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stacy King. I live in Knobah Court in Executive Estates. And I had a whole list of all the different facts that we've heard from everybody else and are very worried about the quality of life. So instead of reading from my list, I thought maybe I would share with you my neighborhood, because I love my neighborhood. I love you guys. We moved here in two thousand and seventeen, and that summer, my husband had a heart attack. And all my neighbors came together before I even knew anybody, and I found a card in my mailbox with money in there, and all these people had signed it, giving us well wishes. Like, our neighborhood is a community who always comes together for each other in many different ways. During During COVID, we couldn't do our annual Easter egg hunt at the park that all the neighbors put together. So instead, we planned Summer Halloween, and all the kids got dressed up, all the people, all the houses took part, handed out candy in the summer. It is an amazing neighborhood and amazing group of people, and setting up this data center will destroy all that. Everybody will leave, housing market will go down, the community will be gone. And I wanted to keep it quick because I know a lot of other people want to say, but I think you need a picture of where this is going and how it will affect the actual citizens that live in Farmington and love this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to make it real quick. My name is Patrick Rugg, 20115 Street, Farmington. Lot of good comments, and where I'm coming from, I'm putting a little bit of a twist on this because actually, my experience is in the semiconductor business and quite a bit of knowledge with these particular types of buildings and all the equipment inside. All the questions and concerns they have are legit. For the life of me, I cannot even understand why this would be considered rezoning and building it in that area. You heard all the concerns, obviously, the noise. It's a constant noise. Go camping, we love camping, listen to somebody run their generator next to you all day long, okay? But besides that, environmentally speaking, and my hard time because honestly, this affects my business line, is the water consumption, it's there. I mean, you're talking hundreds of thousands of gallons, okay? And how are they doing it? Are they gonna be using floor cleaner or cooling as well? Are they gonna be using chemicals? Are they gonna do free cooling during the winter time? I think the first gentleman had a lot of good comments. Do your research, okay? Do your research on what these are. Maybe even go visit one. What is the life cycle? These aren't forever, okay? They don't last forever. 15 years, 20 years, 25? They probably don't know. It's all about the money, okay? I wouldn't want this next to me. I want, I came here to Farmington. I love listening to the frogs at night. I love the community. Like I said, in my business, it's kind of detrimental. I work on the most advanced equipment in the world. My clients are Intel, Broadcom, Seagate, Microchip, TSMC. I've been through every Intel site across the world. I've worked for Japanese companies. I've worked for American company, Netherlands. And there's some concerns you need to be worried about. The water consumption, yeah, a lot of times you're using a couple hundred thousand gallons a day for cooling. You gotta cool, okay? Probably 68 degrees, 18 degrees Celsius, somewhere in that area. The water sometimes go back cleaner than what it is, but it's the consumption. But it's also going out and back at a higher temperature, or maybe it's being free collected back. Maybe they're using free cooling during the winter time. Ask these questions. How are you doing this? How are you doing responsibly? It might not affect you because you're not living to this. You have to listen to it. You gotta see that. Your values are gonna go down, okay? Because nobody wants to live there. I get it, it's about the money. It is about the money. I'm not necessarily against a data center. Like I said, it kind of hurts me, but I think there's a right way to do them, a right place to have them. Do your homework. Do your research, okay? You're sharing the same water as well, so even if it's going back cleaner, it's probably going back at a higher temperature. How is that affecting the water? I'm not even gonna talk about the power consumption. Good luck, okay? I'm sure the power company will be happy. There's better places probably to put this where it makes more sense to the people and even maybe to them. So, this kind of just kind of got thrown on me tonight, just fine about, didn't really have a lot of time, and I was asked to come talk a little bit about it. Ask the right questions. Take in the serious concerns. It will affect them, affects their livelihood. Not against a data center. I know we need them. Everybody loves it, okay? 90% of what he's putting in there, I guarantee, has been made by my company or a product of that. I guarantee it. So, but there's probably a good way to do it. Ask the tough questions. Do your homework. Talk to the people, get their feedback. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andy Berg. I live at 22255 Calhoun Court. Is, is there a way to go back to one of the maps on the screen?
Sure.
Thanks, Tony.
Do you like, preferably the color one?
That one?
All right.
Yep. I have a laser pointer here. This is not a weapon of any type. I just want to point out for you guys where, if I can get it to work. There we go. Well, it's not showing on the screen. Anyway, in the northern part, on the west half of that site, is where myself, several of the folks here tonight live. If you see on the east side, it's all residential along that site. On the north side is Sapphire Lake, which is a recent residential development. This, this land is completely surrounded by residential, so to say that it's anything other than spot zoning, I think, kind of covered that, so I'm not gonna go through that again tonight. A couple points that I want to really touch base on, and I will keep it very brief. Number one is, in the two meetings that I've attended and the several others that, that I've watched, and I'm one of those people that watches every meeting, yes, I know, it's nerdy, I have yet to hear anyone come up and support this project, to provide anything saying, "Hey, this is a great place for it. This is a great idea." And I realize that the squeaky wheel gets the grease, but I would imagine if this was such a fantastic idea for Farmington, you would get someone coming up and voicing that, that voice of support. And I have not heard that yet. I haven't seen all the emails you all receive. It really is a tax dollar thing, and, and I think that's clear, and I'll, I'll keep, again, keep this brief. The other thing I really want you to consider is if this was you, if this was your house that we're talking about, you know, we talk about the extended setbacks of 250 feet plus 40 feet. If you think about that, that would be sitting on the north end of the Farmington football field and having to look at the high school building. That's exactly what we're talking about. That's, a football field is 300 feet, right? 100 yards. That is really what we're, we're talking about going to, is going from a golf course to looking at the high school building, all day, every day, with constant noise and everything else that everyone else has mentioned. So I want to put it in that perspective. I, I welcome anyone. You can come to my house. You can sit on my porch. You can see exactly what I'm talking about. The other thing that I, in, in my day-to-day life is, I'm a vendor risk manager. So what that means is, we work with, in my company, some of the biggest vendors in the world, and we take all these things into consideration when we work with a vendor. What are they doing for the community, things like that? So I work with Google, Amazon, Microsoft, several of the other big technology companies. Very frankly, they aren't gonna care what the city says. They're gonna do what they want in these situations. Yes, they have to abide by the laws. Yes, they have to follow the city ordinances, but I will tell you from experience, they will push every boundary that they can to maximize every dollar. That isn't a surprise to anyone in this room. We're all smart people. We know that companies are in the business of making money. But I want you to remember that Tract is not the one that is making those decisions. That's the end user. That's the Microsoft, the Amazon, the Google that will come in and, and push those boundaries. Tract is setting up the, the placemat for them, saying, "Hey, we've got this parcel of land. You can come in and have a data center here." So I want to really provide that professional language as well around, this is, this is something we have to be very careful about, and I, I think the most important piece to remember is, we're talking about a residential surrounded property. If this was the Bengal Project, as previously mentioned, or somewhere in a better spot, it makes way more sense. This really is just not the right spot. I think you're hearing that from the residents. I think you've, you're seeing that for yourself. And, and again, I want, I know last time I was here, I quoted our, our mayor. I'm gonna quote him again. In the state of the city, he said that Farmington is a, a community of people that want to be here, and that they listen to the residents and they act. And that's exactly what all of these people here, this is what all of us are here for is, we're the residents saying, "Hey, planning commission, this isn't the right place." I haven't heard anybody say tonight, "We don't want a data center. Don't do this." They're just saying, "This isn't the right place for it." So I really want you to take that to heart when you're making the decision tonight and really think about what impact this is gonna have long-term. So, please, don't vote for this. I will leave it at that. Thank you all.
Thank you, Andy.
One page, swipe on the back. My name is Jason Folger. I live at 3015224th, just a few houses down from Andy. My house is 100 feet from the property line here. When my family and I chose to move into this community, it was with the understanding that this property could one day be homes or commercial spaces that would complement our neighborhood. This proposed change to industrial use goes far beyond what any of us expected. It threatens not just the value of our homes, but more importantly, the quality of life we've chosen for our children. What's especially concerning is that there's no planned buffer zoning to protect our neighborhood from this industrial development. Typically, we'd expect some sort of transition, retail parks, open space, that would maintain the integrity and feel of our community. Right now, it seems like our neighborhood would go straight from residential to industrial. That's simply not a responsible or thoughtful approach. In Farmington's 2040 comprehensive plan, you all speak to protecting neighborhoods and natural resources. The vision statement talks about valuing people and neighborhoods. This proposal just does not align with that. A data center on a large natural resource certainly doesn't promote sustainable or a connected community. Not many members of the community, how many members of the community do you see here tonight voicing their support for this rezoning? I understand the need for growth and the temptation to increase the tax base, but this is not the right way to do it. There are other properties far better suited for industrial use. Please avoid focusing on all the reasons why this particular site is attractive to Tract. Instead, advocate for all of us here tonight. Focus on the reasons why you similarly would not support this development so close to your own home. Throughout this process, we've heard from an extremely biased, far-from-neutral third-party source in Tract of all the benefits and other pros of their proposed project. I've yet to hear anyone from city acknowledge a single con that may come from this project. I know that the last time we were all here, some of you admitted that you wanted to do your own research and become smarter on how this project would affect the neighboring residents. Before a vote is made, I really hope to hear about some of that research that you've all done. Tract has mentioned plenty of benefits that would come with the project. Please share with us tonight, what are some of the cons that are on your radar as you weigh this heavy decision? I recognize that this is a tough decision and that you're, you're weighing many factors, but this vote will have a major impact on so many members of this community. My hope is that we, the residents of this neighborhood, aren't seen as collateral damage for the sake of tax revenue. This decision will affect me, my wife, my two daughters, our friends in this neighborhood for decades to come. We trust that you'll make the choice that best reflects Farmington's vision for its people. Thank you.
Good evening, dear commission. Esther Varga, 3094, 225th Street. I would like to point out from the zoning on the compensation plan, comprehensive plan, the purpose is promoting the public health, safety, conservation of property values, compatibility and land use, of land use. So I ask the commission that please do not feel sorry for Tract if they need to spend a few million dollars more to move this project to an area where they need to pull more power. Please feel sorry for us.
Thank you, Ms. Varga.
Thank you to the commission and having this meeting. It's been an interesting road here. My name is Dave Aiken. I live on Beaumont Avenue, just east of the golf course. Played there forever. I want nothing but the best for Bryson Carroll, but this doesn't seem to be the thing. I'm gonna be very brief. Fifth generation here in town. My great-great-grandfather was one of the settlers in that community. My roots run deep. My dad was a mayor. None of that matters. I was driving back from New Prague the other day, past the Catholic church, see some new de-watering going on for the apartment buildings out there, I guess. More plan plotted, blah, blah, blah. Here goes the water. And you know what? I thought back to something I heard a long time ago. This originally was called the Lake of Many Colors. This entire area out past the fairgrounds, out past where I'm talking about watering now, out past my house, out past all the stuff east of Farmington that doesn't have basements because the water level was appropriate for wetlands. Okay, so I'm driving back now, it's like, this was the Lake of Many Colors. This is supposed to be a lake, Chris, my wife. This isn't supposed to be a desert. It's not supposed to be de-watered and all of our water table's going. It's going from here to Waterford, to Elko, to everywhere in between. Everybody is taking our water, our Minnesota water that we sit on. And I've asked the question a couple times, of course, there's no answer. I have a well at my house. At some point, it's gonna go. Maybe it'll go tomorrow, maybe it'll go in two years. But when I have to put in a new deep well for a cost of probably over $50,000, I doubt the city of Farmington, or Tract, or anyone else is gonna be handing me a check to fix my well. Now, at some point, it's gonna fail on its own. We don't need to help it. I'm not opposed to the data center. I'm opposed to this location and how we've got to this point so far. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Andy. Anybody else?
Ryan Peach. I live on Cambrian Way in Executive Estates. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to talk. I got a whole list of facts in, but I think that's been covered. I, I just want to come up here and, and ask, you don't have to answer, but would you all be okay with, with this in your backyard? With the city council members, I'll be okay with this in your backyard? I don't know how we got to this point. This is really the best location we can find. I mean, who's, who's deciding this? I mean, a city planner or, this is the best location we could come up with for an industrial park inside of residential neighborhoods? Come on, that's, it's ridiculous. There's so many better options. I just wanted to think about that when you make your decision. I mean, if you, if you say yes, that's, I mean, you're basically saying you'd be okay with this in your backyard. So, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners.
Good evening.
My name is Dreah Duffin. I live on 225th Street, Farmington, Minnesota. I live in Castle Rock Township, and I'm on the east side of the golf course in Countryside Estates, which is east of this proposed technology park project. The proposed PUD for this project is showing 12 data centers, buildings throughout the course of the preliminary platte with 250 feet setbacks from property lines. Berms are at least 10 feet high, tentatively. The minimum height for billions could be 50 feet or higher. Undetermined. Clearly, the pictures taken for the proposed landscape around the proposed project seem to have been taken from the ground, not a clear 3D effort from the drones of the reality for the landscape berms, trees, and building heights, which are minimally obscured from pictures taken from the ground up. These are speculations and not defined project boundaries. All this for Tract, just to get the infrastructure in place so that they're done, have cashed in their profits for quick financial gain. This is shooting from the hip and not to think about the unforeseen end results, which is clearly absorbed by the citizens of this community because we will bear the cost of unforeseen mishaps that are unknown by the end users, all of us. Tract mentioned that this is only, the only property that they could put this project, project at, and that's, that's a first. There's plenty of land for sale between City of Farmington to the west, up to Pilot Knob. That's more established for commercial industrial than where they want to put it in between all our residential homes. Put it where the planning should be planned in industrial, commercial side of City of Farmington. All you have to do is take a drive down Highway 50, and there are plenty of for-sale signs posted on the open land. There's lots of for-sale open land down Highway 50. If you need some pictures and some phone numbers, I can get them for you. An alternative would to be to move your project instead of asking us to move if we don't like it. This was Mayor Hoyt's wording. This was Mayor Hoyt's wording to us at the Joint 192 School District and City of Farmington Work Session, August 21st, 2024. By the way, Casserac Township is going to become a city. I'm officially announcing that tonight. They are in session tonight for that. They are in process of reviewing the actionable efforts as we speak. Just wanted to FYI the city of Farmington in case you were considering expanding your horizons of Technology Campus going east. Now you'll have to go west. At this time, I'd like to introduce our attorney, Dave Keller. He represents our Environmental Coalition Group. That's all here tonight. Dave?
Thank you for the introduction. My name's David Keller. I'm with the firm of Brannison-Hoggy, 3459 Washington Drive in Eagan. And you have said that my letter is already in the record and as well as the petitions. So I'm not going to read that. I am going to talk about the two things that came to my attention just today. First, in regard to zoning, hate to reminisce a little bit, but I'm a bit of a gray beard. I cut my teeth studying what's a planned unit development when I first joined the firm and ended up arguing with, I think, Mr. Hoffman in Eagan. But that planned unit development was something of mixed uses, and I won't give you my definition. I'll give you a definition from another source. It's that a planned unit development is a type of flexible, non-Neuchâtean zoning device that redefines the land uses allowed within a stated land area. Planned unit developments consist of unitary site plans that promote the creation of open spaces, mixed-use housing, land uses, environmental preservation, and sustainability, and development That's not what I see here. What I see is a single use. I see planned unit development being used as a term to soften the fact that it is a single massive use of this property. It is spot zoning. It is huge. Putting setbacks and berms and stuff around it isn't a planned unit development thing. It's a development standard thing. And so I object to the zoning on that basis. The second thing that came to my attention just today was the, I guess it's the final I remember talking about the planned unit development in the 80s. Now in the 90s, I'm the Savage City Attorney, and they do the first AUAR ever in Minnesota. So I've been watching these, and now today I got the one that says that the anticipated use will utilize water-cooled system based on anticipated size of scenario one, it would have a peak water demand of up to 2.5, 3.5 million gallons per day during the summer months. If you compare that to what's happened with trying to drill wells in Randolph, as I put in my letter, it's way bigger. It's as much as a whole city takes. And that's on page 44. On page 45, it compares water demand, again, points out that the use for the data center would be 2.35 gallons per day, million gallons per day, whereas the demand for what it is zoned for would only be 382,000 gallons per day. The day's coming when water's more important than oil. And I know that we all want AI, and that's why we have these massive data centers. There are small data centers in Eagan, in Twin Cities, but these massive ones are for AI. Can I live without AI? Maybe. Can I live without fresh water? No. And so I would ask you to not rezon this property, not do the PUD on the basis that it needs to pass those tests first, that the applicant should come up with a plan that does not drain the water out from under Dakota County. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Drew Roach. I live at 312 11th Street in Farmington. And I think there's been a lot of great points here made by the individuals that spoke tonight. You know, many of these people are property owners. They've been invested into this community for, as they stated, for decades. Our business owners have children of this community, and they've had stake in this community for quite some time. So the voices should be heard and respected. You know, as they've stated, they're not against the data center, but against the rezoning of this property. One of the things that I, that no one has brought to your attention is the fact that in 2023 legislation, we have sustainable energy that we have brought forth by 2040, that home residents are supposed to be carbon-free of their energy for energy uses by 2040. So my fear is, what is our energy consumption going to look like in 15 years down the line when we're using sustainable energy and we have a higher demand for the energy with electric cars and higher population, and we don't have the energy to provide for the people? We're going to have rolling brownouts, and the people that are going to be affected are the homeowners, the small business owners. Tract is not going to have their energy shut off, their power shut off, but these homeowners are. People that work from home, small business owners. And so my fear is that, is the fact that we won't have enough energy to supply the grid for the people that are going to need it most. We rely on that. We have extreme temperatures and extreme weathers in both the summer and the winter months. So what is it going to look like in, you know, January when it's negative 30 degrees and we have higher energy usage? So that's one of the things that I want to bring attention to the Planning Commission. I hope you guys take that into consideration. And again, you know, hear the voice of the people and not the dollars of the corporations.
Thank you, Mr. Roach.
Good evening. I'm Ian English. I live up on Crimson Way in the North Creek neighborhood. And, you know, a lot of people have spoken tonight. I appreciate everyone coming out. I'm glad you've all made your voices heard. Not a lot of points plus or minus that I'm going to make that other people haven't made, but I just really want to touch on who the constituency of the Planning Commission is, and that's the city of Farmington and its residents. So I really encourage you guys to take into account, seriously take into account, what people say, how people feel, and how this is going to affect their neighborhoods, and listen to what people are saying and vote the way that they want you to vote. So, thank you for your time. Thanks, everyone, for coming out.
I want to thank you for being respectful to each other and we're going to ask Mr. Steen, did you want to respond to some of the, or many of the comments and questions that were
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. I think I'm going to address what I heard, we're really, I'm going to address two primary issues, and then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And if I don't have the answers, we've got the full team. First, I want to talk about the noise. The noise, as I, as I previously mentioned, you know, our intent is that any subsequent phase, any future phase, requires a noise study. That noise study is going to consider the exact equipment that is being proposed. We have, we don't have a noise study right now. What we have done is worked with our consultant to confirm that we can, in fact, operate a data center here in compliance with Minnesota law. And rest assured that we will not be operating, our customers and clients will not be operating a data center here that is out of compliance with Minnesota law. And that will be not just enforced through your police powers as a city, but also contractually. And again, you know, I don't want to speculate about what, I think what we heard is a lot of speculation about what that noise impact could be, based on, you know, maybe some anecdotal evidence, but ultimately, any project will come through subject to a noise study that looks at the exact project, the exact buildings, and the exact equipment. With respect to water, I think it's really important to point out that, yes, I mean, 65 million gallons, it sounds like a lot, and that is a lot of water. What we're talking about is the absolute maximum scenario. But it's important to note that this isn't, we're not starting at zero. It's not 65 million of additional gallons. The existing site has a water appropriation permit for 48 million gallons per year. So that delta is approximately 17 million. And again, 65 million assumes the absolute worst efficiency cooling. So again, we're looking at worst-case scenario. That's 17 million gallons per year. The city's existing water system is approximately 850 million gallons per year. So we're talking less than 2% of the total city's water system increase under the absolute worst-case scenario. And the numbers that you heard under the AUAR is, again, worst-case scenario on the worst day of the year. The reason that you would cite a data center, among many reasons, in the state of Minnesota is we have, we have great weather. And that weather is cool for much of the year. So realistically, at most, you're probably looking at up to two months, maybe, of cooling. So again, we're looking at absolute peaks here, and I think it's important to remember that we're not starting at zero. We're talking about a very nominal increase. So with that, there were a lot of other comments that were made. I'm happy to answer questions if you've got those questions. I don't want to assume specifically what you're looking for, but we're happy to answer.
With the Commission's permission, I have some questions. Can I go first? And, Mr. Steen, you know, I know everything initially is minimum development standards, and I understand that. I got to believe you and your staff have knowledge, and, you know, some of the questions that I've got are possibly looking into the future, maybe anticipating things. I don't expect you to answer them all, but do your best. What type of building construction? Is it tip-up or another type?
You know, I think that that's something that I'm going to defer to our team on, the specific developments. But here's what I would say, is we don't know what that specific development looks like today. What we know is that the design, there are design standards, minimum design standards, and you will have an opportunity to review the exact specific buildings when they come forward.
Maybe procedurally, you know, this is preliminary, and there will be a final and all that. We'll get into more of this detail. I'm trying to help the Commission get a feel, help the residents get a feel. Some of the other ones are phasing of the construction. You know, you have 12 buildings. What do you anticipate the phasing of that construction would be over what period of
Again, it is a little hard to speculate. We would anticipate that beginning in probably 2027 is when the infrastructure would go in, and then we would anticipate at least two phases. That is ultimately determined by the market. And, you know, as we have it right now, there's an outside date, but we anticipate it would be a couple of years between the phases to complete everything.
Just a couple of years, you feel?
It, you know, best-case scenario, a couple of years. Worst-case scenario, it could be more than that. But again, it's a multi-phase project, and the intent is that as those projects come in, and then as those phases come in, you have the opportunity to review them, review the new technology, the new design, and the new models that are out at that time.
And then I know you had a slide from your website about planned construction accesses for each site. What type of upgrades do you anticipate having to those accesses? Because those are also would be, there could be a disruption to the residents that live in the area?
Absolutely. So the intent is, right now, we would anticipate access from both the north and the south of that north parcel. And I don't recall the exact name, is it 225th? Would access both. We would anticipate that there will be turn lanes on both roads, and those turn lanes and other improvements will be based on that final site orientation and site design. And those costs will be borne by the developer. And those will be costs that are not borne by the city, but they will be borne by the developer as part of that development contract that we would enter into at that phase.
Would the access be also on the north side on Highway 50, and what upgrades would you do to that?
There would also be turn lanes on Highway 50, correct.
Okay. You know, I looked at it, and you had the ponds and the northern part of it. So do you know the elevations of the site?
You know, personally, I can't name them off right now, but yes, we have surveys, and they should be part of your packet. There is wetlands to that north, but, and then there is the flood plain to the south.
Very far south, yeah.
Right, very far south. But the majority of the site in Brown is developable area and is outside of the flood plain and outside of the wetlands.
And you mentioned in your minimum development standards, towers. Are they anticipating towers on this site? If so, how many?
Say that again, towers?
You mentioned towers as a...
Communication towers. You know, I think that we want to, I don't think we can commit to the number of towers right now. I think what we want to know, or want to be able to commit to is that we will be able to do those as needed. Again, this is really technology-based and proposal-based, but we would anticipate that there will be eventually some towers. Again, those towers could be up to 80 feet, but again, they're going to be subject to that same spacing requirement. So it would be more than a football field away from the property line at a minimum.
And I know you had a slide, this now gets into more building characteristics. You had a slide on cooling, and it's a big thing with the water usage. Will they all be evaporative cooled, or will some be electric cooled, or I don't know yet?
So the fact is that that technology is rapidly developing. And even from the time that this project started to today, we're seeing changeovers. It's really intended to, one, reduce water consumption, and, two, embrace newest technology and, three, reduce noise. So those are technologies that are rapidly evolving, you know, in a year. You know, when we put shovels in the ground, we'll probably be having a different conversation. And that is exactly why we want to make sure that this process gives this Planning Commission another opportunity to review the specifics of that development.
Okay. Can you explain, you mentioned in a slide or something, the concept of recycled water? What? Can you explain that to us?
So there are a variety of systems that use recycled water. Not all water is wastewater that we use. There will be some that'd be treated as industrial wastewater, but it primarily would consist of recirculating water, allowing it to cool and using that for cooling purposes before we would put it back into the system.
Okay. Tony, can you build, put up the building slide on there, please? The next one's kind of deal a little bit with that, help get the feel for the Commission.
This one?
Yes. Where do you think the HVAC positions would be placed on the building? You know, how many of them? What kind of sound attenuation or noise mitigation are you planning for those?
So that is going to ultimately depend on the end user. There's a couple of factors, right? Ultimately, what they're proposing to do, but then the specific equipment that they're using. What we've done within the development standards of this PUD is make sure that we have requirements related to noise mitigation, and they're pretty extensive. If you read through your packet, it talks about mufflers, vibration dampening. And again, at the time, again, this is purely conceptual. This is our 2.5 million square foot maximum. This is what it could look like, but you're going to have an opportunity to review it, to ask those questions about the specific technology at the time.
And we'll see it on, if we get to any final plat. But, you know, my sense is, is if you put them in a certain location of the property, there could be less effect to anybody on the outside or the surrounding parts of the property.
Absolutely. And what we do see with these hyperscalers that will be the end user is that oftentimes they will try to co-locate some of this equipment interior to the site. You know, it's a large site, so we have lots of flexibility to put it in between buildings, and there will be, you know, there will be opportunity for citing those throughout the site.
Okay. And then we had a resident that talked about light. Will there be a photometric study done? If so, when?
So the photometric study will depend on the specific project. As part of the city's Site Plan Review Code, there is, you have the absolute authority to ask for... There is, you have the absolute authority to ask for photometric studies, view shed studies, sound studies, and the expectation is that at that time, those will be provided. And that's very typical and not unexpected.
Okay. And then Tony did a great job of explaining, because I did have that question on where the fence would be relation, in relation to the, to the, both the buffer and the berm, and it would be on the building side of both of those two. Again, this is a thing, if, have you looked at the site? Do you know about how many trees would be saved in that 40-foot buffer?
The intent is that we would save as many as possible. And if you look at the standards that talk about that, there, the intent is absolutely to retain as many existing trees. Certainly diseased trees and trees that would need to move will, will be moved. But that 40-foot buffer within the setback, that's intended to go around nearly the entire site, and it would intend to be a, a natural buffer. So using the existing growth.
And, you know, I thought you mentioned, or somebody mentioned in the, the explanation about the substation and that, that doesn't fall under the screening. Are you planning any screening if you have a substation on one corner?
There, there would be screening required of the substation. What we're asking for is exemption from the, the building design standards, which talk about fenestration and, you know, height changes. A substation is a, a substation, but we would work with the city to, to wrap that presumably and, and screen it.
Okay, yeah. And some communities have required things like that. Do you know if it is, and I believe it was in your, either your slides or your write-up, you, you called it a transmission system. Is that a distribution substation though, or a transmission substation?
That is, it, that's not a question that I can answer off the, the top of my mind. We can certainly answer it if that's a, a burning question, though.
So you don't know if that's a looped substation? Yeah, you're the utility guy, yeah. I spoke with you before.
Philip Sandino up here.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Philip Sandino.
Are they primary metered, or are they distribution substation?
So there's going to be, but we're going to take off the transmission system, but it will be distributed across the site.
Yeah.
So with a combination of both.
Okay. Do you know if they're planning to loop the transmission system?
They're, yeah, it's definitely going to be. That's part of the residence scheme.
Yeah, I would think it would. I mean, for redundancy, no doubt. Okay, thank you. And then I know Dave left, but I did have a resident question on the well, and just one of, will it impact the, could it impact any homeowner's wells out there? And if so, what support will they have or mitigation will they have?
Yeah, the answer is no. This, this project would draw off city well. The city already has capacity to serve this project. Again, we're talking about a delta of, you know, maybe 17 million gallons per year. So the answer is no. It would not happen if that's the case. If there is not sufficient water for the site, it would, we would not be drawing water. It's, that, you know, I can tell you, John Powell, your city engineer, is very clear about that, and we've been working closely with him to look at the serviceability study for this area. And, and as part of your comp plan, the city is looking at that, and we are assured that the development of this area will be addressed. It's also worth noting, again, that based on the zoning of this area alone, the golf course alone, you could have up to 600 houses. And if you had that type of density, medium-density housing, we're talking about up to eight houses per acre, you would have more than double the draw of the absolute maximum anticipated. And that's a much more consistent draw on your wells. So realistically, this is, you know, this is a, a less intense draw than straight housing, which would likely, you know, would certainly be an alternative here.
I would agree with you. And you had a slide that mentioned the number of construction employees and the number of F T Es afterwards. Can you repeat that for people?
Yeah, it's anticipated that at full buildout, so the 2.5 million square feet that we were, we would be looking at about 270, I think the estimate is 273, full-time jobs. Those are what we consider quality jobs. They, they exist of both skilled or education-required, skilled, unskilled, highly technical jobs, the whole range. Those are onsite positions. The, the construction jobs we anticipate during that period would be about 1,500 construction jobs.
Of all trades, I'd imagine.
Correct.
Okay. And then last thing, can you discuss site security both during construction and after full buildout?
Yeah, site security is very serious, obviously. What, you know, in addition to the fence, we would have security guards onsite. It would be monitored 24/7. So you would have both remote security and onsite security to ensure, yeah, site security. I mean, these, data centers are used for all types of information. It's absolutely critical, you know, infrastructure information, banking information, defense information, and security is taken very seriously.
Yeah, I've also heard that very few, if any, people can get into it.
That is correct. That is correct.
All right. Thank you, the commission, for allowing the list of questions. Others, I'm sure have questions too. I'll start with Commissioner Teske.
No, I think Chair Roddy asked a majority of the questions I had, which was great. Thank you. I appreciate the community stepping out tonight and speaking up, and I also appreciate the track team stepping forward and putting together the framework that if this moves forward, we will adhere to and amend if and so if needed. So without knowing those end users yet, it's, it's pretty ambiguous, but I appreciate that effort to put that forward for the neighbors surrounding that site, so.
Thank you, Krista. Commissioner Winchettle.
No, I appreciate everybody coming out. You know, personally, I have done my own research. I've looked into it. I appreciate the presentations, city staff putting together everything too. And you answered my question, which was going to be on the technology for noise and how it is changing. So you made a point, and I think it's a valid point, that when this project gets developed, if it does, you know, who knows, the technology might be there to reduce the noise to very minimal standards. We, we can't say that now, but, you know, looking down the road, it's something to think about, so. Appreciate the time.
Thank you, Phil. Commissioner Leto.
Yeah, thanks, everyone, for coming and speaking up, and I think this has been a really great presentation. I just wanted to make sure that I'm grasping this concept. So to, based on the end user, you could possibly have less buildings here, correct? So you could have like eight or four or one on each kind of thing, depending on who uses it. So we're looking at this preliminary plot to be something, potential full buildout could be all of this. So I just want to make sure I'm clear on that aspect. And then a lot of people are concerned with their property values and their quality of life. Do you have anything, and also, one last thing, and other sites. So could you possibly address those three issues that have been brought up by several people? The possibility of other sites for this? The concern of property values going down and the quality of life for people in the neighborhood? Please.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll take those, I think, in order. So first question about who the end user is and what that design is? Absolutely. This is a maximum, 2.5 million square feet maximum. If it's more efficient, then they'll build it more efficient. If they want to, if they wanted to do one building and they could figure out how to do that, they might do that. But, you know, I, I think that we want to just make sure that we plan for the maximum with the expectation that it can always work back from there.
Okay.
In terms of other sites, we're constantly looking for other sites. This is, this is a, from a development perspective, this is a good site. It's got, you know, a readily accessible power. It's got sewer and water in the planned future, and, you know, we're able to plan around the edges to try to hopefully mitigate some of those. I understand that we're not going to address all those concerns, but we're always looking at other sites as well. In terms of property values, you know, I understand that that's always a fear, right? This is the US, and, and our property ownership is very critical to individuals. We all, you know, want our little piece of land, and that, we want to protect that dearly. We get that. The data, it's often used as a boogeyman, but the data generally plays out that it is either maintains static or actually results in a net increase in property value. And there's a number of reasons. It's, this project is going to result in the extension of sewer and water to this area of the city, in this area of what it sounds like could be future City of Castle Rock. That sewer and water is going to make this area ripe for redevelopment, is going to make people want to move in, and it will, anecdotally, you know, it, it has the potential to...
All right, you know what? Excuse me. They were respectful when you had an opportunity to speak. Please let them speak. He's answering a commissioner's question. Thank you. Go ahead.
The other piece I would, I would note is, again, you know, this is anecdotal evidence in, but looking at Loudoun County, Virginia. In recent years, they have seen consist, they have about $25 billion dollars' worth of data centers, and they have consistently seen the residential property values increase as data center development has increased. So we would anticipate that, that it is not going to negatively impact. The other piece I would note is, there's a pretty substantial tax base that comes with the, you know, potentially $20 billion in investment of a data center here. That $20 billion in investment is taxed, and that gets divided among the city, the school district, and has the effect in general of subsidizing residential housing to allow communities to, again, in general, potentially even avoid future tax increases or blunt those future tax increases.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Leanne. Commissioner Snobek.
Yeah, thanks for all the comments today. I, I have some of the same concerns as, as some of the speakers tonight. As the end user comes in, I just wanted to be crystal clear that, that things, everything, adjustments to this plan is going to come through the planning commission, go through the city council, so that there is a graduated look at each decision made by this end user. I think that's so important for people to, to feel that it's not a one and done, that there's going to be follow-up, and there's going to be regulations, rules followed, and, and you are saying that's going to be this process all, all the way along the way.
Absolutely. For each phase of the project, you will see the site plan review and be able to require all of those documentation. Outside of preliminary grading, nothing is going to, going to move until you give it the blessing, and the conditions of your approval are enshrined in a contract with the city.
I think that's important to understand, even the cooling system, right? Just, just hearing the information, the new technology, and understanding how that's going to affect our water, our electricity, and our property values in, in our community. But thank you for answering the questions, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mitch. And now I have a, a question for the commission, and you can think about it for a few seconds. My question will be, are you ready to make a recommendation this evening? Or would you like this continued to our next meeting? I'll ask you that question first, and then if the majority want to move on or make a motion tonight, then we will explain rationale to our residents. So think about it just for a few seconds. There is no wrong way, no wrong answer, but I'd just like to see what the majority is. I'll do it through polling. I'll start with Commissioner Winchettle.
I saw you move forward.
Does that mean a vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Leto.
Vote tonight.
Commissioner Snobek.
Vote tonight.
Commissioner Teske.
Vote tonight.
So the commission will be voting on this this evening. And so I, with the commission's permission, I'd like to go first. All right. You know, some people had asked, "Commissioner, do your homework."
Whoa, 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 you're, you didn't close a public hearing yet, are you?
What's that?
I didn't hear you close a public hearing.
That's because they haven't closed it yet.
Okay, so I'd like to...
You what?
I'd like to speak.
Go ahead.
Here, Aristotle 941 East Street, former mayor and former councilperson. But I want to leave you in your minds, and I haven't heard you speak yet tonight about any of it. What is the land? Is it a good use? Does it fit in your comp plan? You're changing your comp plan? You're changing your, your zoning? You're rezoning it from residential, which is already... How many more times is this going to happen? These people come in, I hope they're paying for all this time. When I had a CUP in my own name, I had to pay $350. It isn't free. You're wasting all of our people's time and money by coming here. First, you had it in the front door, now you're coming around the back door, these people. They're throwing stuff at the wall to see how stupid Farmington really is. And if you people are commissioners, you better think about this. I don't know how many of you lived here, but I've lived here for 70-plus years, and that land isn't suitable to be built on. When we went with Castle Rock, that land was for a school and a school owner. Can you imagine what the infrastructure is going to cost? We put in a prairie waterway from east Farmington. Dirk, you were on there. It took, it took a lot, a lot of money. Because, you know, why we put in a waterway? Does any of you know what a prairie waterway is? On the, you four?
Yeah, I do.
I haven't heard you, no, but I'm just saying, I know they can't answer me.
Jerry, that's not relevant.
It is relevant, because this water's got to go somewhere, and you gotta, I'm just saying, before, leave this in your mind. Think about before you vote, and I think you owe it to the residents of these people here and the residents of Farmington. Does it fit? Does it make sense? Does it fit in, in the planning, what you're doing? Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. All right, where was I at? No, I, oh, somebody had mentioned, "Do your homework." I went to a visit, data centers. It went on probably one of the warmest days of the summer, about three weeks ago. It was a Monday. I remember we had a bad storm that night. 100 degrees, actually, when we were down visiting, it was 102. We went to Waukees, Iowa, visited the Apple data center. It's not online yet, beyond the 24th. The reason we went there really was to look at design setbacks, things such as that, learn some new things, a new building. Their technology had already changed. And when I mentioned, I asked about electric cooling, they were, they were being electric cooled. They weren't being cooled with water. They were being electric cooled, so it was, you know, it was quiet, you know, but it was. We went to Des Moines, Iowa, Microsoft. I think, believe they have five Microsoft data centers. And when we went there, we parked, and it was with some trees, and I, I go, "When are we going there? When are we going to get there?" We were there, and we couldn't hear anything through the trees. We did drive around on the main road to the front, and what I could hear at that time, and the reason I asked about with the location of the cooling towers, was if they're in the middle, I, I don't know if you, how much you'd hear them, and I'm sure every one of them was running at full, full bore that day, because it was the hottest day of the summer. And then we went to Altoona, Iowa, and we looked at the Meta one, which is, as you know, the owner of Facebook. And that was operational, very similar design as this, other than where the resident, and there were residents right there, right across the street, and I forgot to mention the one in Waukees. There are residential subdivisions building out and around this one.
Just shit the fuck through. Jesus Christ. Right?
Are you done?
You?
So then we went to Altoona and visited the Meta one. Again, the residents, they had the front rather than the sides, and, you know, that's why I asked where the cooling towers were going to be, because if, to me, if they're placed appropriately, I don't even know if you're going to hear those. So we did that. You know, as far as somebody, people have mentioned, is this the right location? We started more than a year ago, and, you know, we hear the residents saying, "We need more commercial in this community." And I, you know, Highway 50 is a major thoroughfare through the community, so, you know, this is, seems logical that it's going to be off of this, so. Those are what I learned. I'll start with Commissioner Teske.
Yeah, I had done some research. I've worked on data centers in the past, long, long time ago. The technology has changed significantly, and along with Chair Roddy's review, the noise is, it's not, I think, what you all are expecting, so I'm just going to leave it at that.
Commissioner Winchettle.
Yeah, same as everybody else. I've, I've done my research. You know, I, I've talked to plenty of residents in town, throughout the town, down in that area, you know, you name it. And I've done my research. I've driven by these data centers. Again, I, I think the noise is a perceived problem, which I think can be mitigated by a lot of these systems and dark gray grade points where, where the cooling towers are put, you know, where the trees are put, you know, all that, so.
Commissioner Leto.
I just want to mention, I've also done my research. I, in June, went to the city of Chaska and went to their data center area for United Healthcare, which is my insurance company, so I was very involved in wanting to make sure that my data is secure and safe there. There have, I think, four or five data centers at the end of a cul-de-sac. There is a field and residential... There is a field and residential housing across the field. The only thing I could hear was the sound of my car running and the birds in the field. So, I just wanted to leave that at that. And to let you know, the City of Chaska is also considering doing another data center. I have a colleague that's vice chair of their planning commission, so.
Commissioner Snobek.
Yeah, listening to everybody's ideas here and on the commission. My one thought is, if not here, where? It's going to go someplace in the community, close to our community, and it's going to pull from the same aquifer, the same electrical grid. So, some of those concerns, you know, why not gain a tax revenue for our community rather than five miles down the road? So, I think that's one thing I've really thought a lot about, is it's going to be taxed on Minnesota's water or energy at some point, someplace, because the data centers have to come. So, that's one thing that's going through in my head during this process.
Mr. Leto, I'd like for a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close.
For a second.
A second.
Motion and second. Call the roll, please.
Winchattle.
Yes.
Teske.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Leto.
Yes.
Snobek.
Yes.
For the commission, and we'll take them jointly. We have a preliminary plat, preliminary PUD for the Farmington Development Park. We also have the rezoning of two parcels, as explained in the staff report, along with three contingencies as our motion. This will be a recommendation to our city council.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and second for a favorable recommendation to our city council on both. Any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please.
Teske.
Yes.
Roddy.
Yes.
Leto.
Yes.
Snobek. Yes.
Winchattle.
Yes.
All right, thank you for coming. We will take a five-minute break. From the commission, I'd ask you to stay at the table, please.
I have one question. This is a public, you know, this is regular, you can add those.
We'll call the meeting back to order. With that, we'll move into our discussion item. This is the Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition Final Plat and Plan Unit Development. Tony, you're going to take this.
I am. Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. We do have a final plat and final PUD before you this evening. Lennar is the applicant and developer. It is for the Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition. The final plat does consist of 67 single-family lots spread over just under 26 acres. It is consistent with the approved preliminary plat. The preliminary plat also contains 66 townhome-
All right, thank you.
Lots, and those townhome lots would be developed at a later date. The property to be rezoned are three plan unit development. Average lot size within the development is 6,198 square feet, with a minimum of 4,800 square feet. The plat contains three outlots, those being Outlets A, B, and C. Outlet A will be dedicated as parkland with this plat. Outlet B is a stormwater facility and will also be deeded to the city. And Outlet C is the future townhome portion of the plat. This is the final, the overall final plat. Have to forgive me, the orientation, north is going to the one side. The Outlet A is that park area on the northern end of the site. And then, as you see, Outlet C is in that southeast corner and would be townhomes, future townhomes. So, again, just a copy of the plat for the single-family lots as well. Access to the site will be to the south end, at the south end of the plat with the connection of 218th Street West to 220th Street West. 218th Street, I do want to mention 218th Street West. That's in the Vermillion Commons Townhome addition directly to the east. Will not be extended at this time to this plat due to some ongoing negotiations with the gas company and the crossing of that, their pipelines. Without that extension, it does create one access point to this fourth edition for egress and ingress. And that would be at that 218th Street and 220th Street on the south end. The developer has agreed, though, to construct a temporary Batumis emergency access that would extend from what would be the terminus of Rose Drive, south through that Outlet C, to 220th Street to provide at least a secondary access for emergency services. That access would have barricades and signage to keep out any unauthorized vehicles from utilizing that access. It would be strictly for emergency and temporary until that connection to, or through those gas pipelines is made. The connection of this emergency access will have to be approved by Dakota County, just from a spacing guideline. All public roads will consist of a 60-foot right-of-way with a 32-foot wide roadway. As I had mentioned, the park that will be located in Outlet A is a 1.5-acre park. Five-foot-wide sidewalk is proposed on the west side of Rose Drive, south side and east side of 218th Street West. And also, Dakota County has a 12-foot-wide trail drainage until the easement, which was granted back in 2022, which runs along the western and northern boundary of the plat. And that easement is shown on the plat document. As I had mentioned, this is, they are seeking final plat or final PUD with this as well. Within your packet, there is a draft PUD agreement. The developer has reviewed that agreement and finds it acceptable. The agreement outlines certain deviations for the development and includes the allowance of single-family dwellings within the R3 zoning district, reduces minimum lot area for single-family lots to 4,800 square feet, reduce minimum lot width for single-family lots to 40 feet. The minimum setbacks for single-family lots would be front of 25 feet, the side interior lot of six feet. Side corner or street would be 20 feet, and then the rear would be 25 feet. The maximum lot or building coverage for single-family lots would be increased to 45%, and that's because, again, the lot sizes are being reduced. Allowance of private streets within the R3 zoning district, that would be the townhome portion, and then reduce the private street width to 24 feet versus our standard 26 feet. And again, that is only for the townhome portion of the development, future phase. The engineering department has reviewed the Fourth Edition Final Plat and recommends approval upon satisfaction of all engineering comments related to construction plans for grading and utilities, as well as the developer entering into a development contract with the city, and that all security fees and costs shall be paid. The action that is requested this evening, then, is to recommend approval of the Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition Final Plat and PUD agreement contingent upon the following, and forward that recommendation onto the city council. The first condition is the satisfaction of all engineering comments related to the construction plans for grading and utilities. And number two, a development contract between the developer and City of Farmington shall be executed, and security fees and costs shall be paid. Submission of all other documents required under the development contract shall be required.
Thank you, Tony. Mr. Trosky, thank you for waiting. Do you have anything to add?
Thank you, Tony. Tony is really great. Pleased to work with him. Did a great job. Happy to be back in Farmington. It's moving really quick. You'll probably see me again here, you know, shortly. Don't know if that's good or bad, but we're excited to move forward with this, so happy to answer any questions.
Do you remember that house where the young lady was in here, along 220th?
Yes.
It was some kind of berm or something. Has that been resolved?
So, right now, that would be for the townhome portion, and we're not requesting to final plat that right now. That'll be, you know, probably a year or so away.
Okay.
But that was noted, and we've got space for increased landscaping there.
Will you remember that, please? I mean, gee, she was pretty easy about it, but I still think it should be done.
Of course, yeah. We spoke after the last meeting, and, you know, we had a good conversation, so we both agree.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're bringing that. Commissioner Winchattle.
No, I think it looks good. My concern, what about the easement or the access point, I should say. You guys got that resolved, so it looks perfect to me. Thanks.
From a safety guy here, now you expect that, wouldn't you?
Sorry. Tony mentioned crossing a pipeline. We found out halfway through the process that the owner of that pipeline will be vacating one of the pipes in two or three years, and they wanted a seven-figure sum to cross it. And so, city staff here has been kind enough, and hopefully you'll agree that we're going to put in that temporary road until they vacate that easement, and that we can cross it with the permanent road. So, if anybody's asking, why isn't there a connection here? It didn't make a lot of business sense to pay over seven figures for a temporary road. So, we've got it. John has been great in the engineering department. So, just happy to be here.
So, Tony, has that put in the developer agreement, then, that it will be their responsibility when that is done? If, what if it's never done? Never vacated, never done. What happens?
Good question.
Can I address that?
Absolutely.
We're happy to put that in the development contract, so we'll lock it in.
We don't review the development contract. I'm just asking if, you know, Tony, when he gets put on the spot with the council, you know what is going to happen.
We can certainly add language to the development contract.
We want it for our customers and residents and your residents, too. So, we want it there, so happy to put that in the development contract.
And it's a safety issue for our community.
It's not only a safety issue, but just from a connectivity standpoint, between the two, between the, you know, Vermillion Commons Fourth and the first four phases of the townhome development. Just from connectivity, it makes sense to have that.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, just a clarification, since you're on the topic. Could that road, if it's never resolved, be a permanent road, that Batumis one? If you don't go to the next phase, or like, what is it? Do you understand my question?
It could potentially, that's not the intent here. The intent is to, and again, I realize that intent can turn into a long-term solution, but that's not the intent here. The intent is that once the, the pipeline that the gas company is looking to vacate is 100 and-
Yeah, five years old.
105 years old. It's been-
We didn't say it's almost as old as me.
It's been, they've been looking to decommission that line for a little while, and the development of the townhomes around this has kind of prompted them to speed up that decommission. And once that line is basically removed, it frees up them from doing the additional work that would be needed to safeguard the residents from that line, that potentially hazardous line.
Sorry to interrupt you, Derek. Apologies.
Is it already done, or?
I'm done, yep.
Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Leto, weren't we?
Yeah, I think so. I don't have any questions. It looks good.
I have no questions either. Just to bring you back.
I just had the same question about it, and it's been answered, so thank you.
I do have a question for you, Tony.
Mr.-
The private streets and townhomes, where are we at with that?
As far as the-
We had a discussion of it.
Allowing it?
Yeah, we had a discussion of it a couple of years ago.
Yep, and basically what we did is we moved that directly to just the R3 zoning district. Because that's where you typically have your- because that's where you typically have your townhomes, that's where you're going to have your private streets. If you recall, it was originally in the R2.
Yeah, it was, on some feel.
Right, so we, we moved it strategically because of that, knowing that the R3 is your, generally your townhome district, where you're gonna have those HOAs. You're gonna have, you know, the, the other off-street parking types situations, so yeah.
We're glad that it's going so well out there and that you're continuing to come in. Hopefully, maybe we'll see you again this year, we'll put you at the beginning of the agenda, possibly.
Bomb's the word.
Possibly, all right, yeah, all right. All right, in front of the commission, then, is a recommendation to our city council for Vermillion Commons Fourth Edition Final Plat and Plan Unit Development, along with two contingencies. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion for a favorable recommendation, is there any more discussion? If not, call the roll, please. Roddy. Yes. Leto.
Yes.
Snowbeck.
Yes.
Windshuttle.
Yes.
Teske.
Yes.
All right, well, I appreciate staff coming, we don't usually keep you here till 9:30, but we, actually, Tony, it's the beginning of the night. He picked the time exactly. So I'm just, I kinda wanna just delay a little bit so he's one minute off. So, no, I just remind our residents and viewers, the next regular meeting is October 8th. With that, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're officially adjourned, thank you, everybody, for your time.